Hi, I'm Justin Jensen and welcome to my channel. It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust, sweat, and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs and may fall again and again. Because there is no effort without error or shortcoming. Teddy Roosevelt. Hello, how's everybody doing? Good to see everyone, thank you so much for joining me. October 1st. Let Halloween begin, right? You're probably going to hear a bunch of kids. That is because my kids have some of their friends over and it gets loud. That's what happens. So, thank you all for your patience. I appreciate it very much. So I thought we would do a study session. The hurricane is over us right now and we are getting a bunch of rain. Has not stopped. So I just figured, what the heck? Let's just chill out a little bit and talk about some interesting cases that I've seen. I call these the study sessions. They're more chill and we just kind of learn together. Yes, that's right, Ambie, thank you so much. So we are going to be talking about a little boy named Shawn Dottery. He is a York County, Virginia boy, 12 years old. And, in my opinion, died under very mysterious circumstances. And, is it an accident? Is it self-inflicted? Or is there more involved? Just a sweet little boy. And, the thing is, I don't, I can't find a whole lot of information on it, to be honest with you. But, we're gonna try and we're going to see, like, I literally know little about it. And that's why I thought, you know, if I'm gonna be researching, let's just go and laugh together and, and see what is what with this. So, I'm sure a lot of you guys are tired. If you was up with Marissa all night. That was an interesting evening, to say the least. And, I've kind of took cat naps, one and off, all day. It's been raining here, so, and then we're going to be talking about 61-year-old Walter Harold Mitchell. Guilty of 29 counts of abandonment or concealment of a dead body. Found 24 body parts, including five human heads, found scattered in Arizona. So, it sounds like a modern-day, you know, serial killer. Who knows, right? So, I found an article on this Shawn Dottery. It's eight minutes long and let's listen to it and see what, you know, what it's about. And then, we'll talk about it. And, I want to find out where in Virginia this is, because I'm more or less live in Virginia, West Virginia, right on the border, so. Yes. Okay, so this is Shawn, little Shawn Dottery, very sad.
Been to Shawn. A York County boy's death leaves his family with questions. York, on April 14th, a 12-year-old York County boy was found hanging from a swing set in his backyard. Shawn Dottery's death was ruled a suicide. But recently, after being frustrated by what they say are unanswered questions, the family launched a social media campaign and wants the case reopened. According to Ramona and Jared Rivas, Shawn's mother and stepfather, Shawn was a bright, happy boy who the night before his death was laughing and joking with family. The family's campaign prompted the York Pococin Sheriff's Office to respond last week, saying the death was fully investigated. "We take these matters very seriously. Evaluate all evidence and consider all possibilities," Major Ron Montgomery said in a videotaped statement posted on the office's Facebook page. "Much of the information being posted to the social media site is opinion, innuendo, and fabrication, which is not consistent with the evidence that was collected by Sheriff's Office investigators during their investigation." Shawn's family, however, wants another agency to investigate. "They still have too many questions," they say. That April afternoon, Shawn's sister Maria found him hanging from the swing set. He was later pronounced dead at Riverside Regional Medical Center in Newport News. When the sheriff's office ruled the death a suicide, the Rivas's were confused. "He loved Marvel, he loved Disney, he loved his family, but most importantly, he loved life," Jared Revo said. "One of Shawn's favorite things to do was read. In fact, at a book fair a few years back, Shawn spent $107 of his own money on new books." Shawn, a sixth grader at TAB Middle School, who dreamed of one day becoming president, was one of four siblings, including an older sister and two younger brothers. According to his family, he was the kindest of them all, sometimes bringing extra food for a friend at school. The autopsy report from the State Office of the Chief Medical Examiner states that Shawn was found partially suspended by a shoelace-type string that was tied to the swing set. While hanging, there was reportedly a nylon bag over his head and belt strapped around his abdomen, pinning both of his arms to his side, the report says. It is also noted that he was wearing-
So I got a question. So they're saying that his arms were pinned to his side? How can your arms be pinned to your side and hang yourself at the same time? Just asking.
His stepfather's clothes and was barefoot. His glasses were on the ground nearby. No note was found. In the parents' bedroom, Shawn's underwear was on the floor. The dresser doors were open. Before his death, Shawn was babysitting his two-year-old brother at the house while-
To me, that sounds staged. Like, oh, we're gonna keep the drawers open. So, it looks like he maybe rummaged through, you know, the clothes to find something. Sounds staged to me.
Ramona Rivas took her mother to a doctor's appointment. "Shawn was excited to watch his little brother," Ramona said. Jared Rivas, meanwhile, was in Williamsburg with their second youngest son for an appointment. During Shawn's last moments, he completed his homework, started taking out the trash, made a snack, and even had a quick phone call with his mother, about an hour before his body was discovered.
Does that sound like somebody that's going to kill themselves? Did his homework, made a snack, talked to his mom, was excited to, you know, watch his brother. This little boy wanted to be president. He spent $107 of his own money on books.
In the medical examiner's report, it is noted that no known history of depression or suicidality was found. It does note that the police investigation raised the possibility of bullying at school, but his family said that, except for one incident in December, they're unaware of any other bullying and said Shawn didn't seem to be overly upset by it. His family questions how the examiner and police were drawn to the conclusion of suicide, especially with Shawn's behavior the night before. The night before he passed, Ramona bought some cookies, and a couple of them were carrot cake. He was so excited about that cookie. He was like, "Mom, this is great, moi." "It's so good," Jared said, remembering Shawn doing a comical chef's kiss in response to the cookie, eliciting laughter from the rest of the family. Soon after, Shawn had his normal catch-up session with his mom before bed. Every night, no matter what, he would come up and follow Ramona around. "He would just follow her around and talk to her about whatever they talked about," Jared Rivas said. And that was the same thing Wednesday night before he passed. Every time the catch-up sessions got finished, he'd turn and look at us. Head go, "Well, goodnight, guys." "I love you," and bounced down the hall. The family was expecting to move soon. Ramona Rivas is a lieutenant colonel in the US Air Force, and she recently had accepted a new position at the Pentagon. Once she got the call, she told her family the news at dinner. Shawn jumped up screaming with excitement and said he couldn't wait to tell his friends that his mother worked for the Pentagon. He wanted to know if he could go into the Pentagon and get some of the milk chocolate candies with the iconic building stamped on top. "On the first day when I went into the Pentagon, I went into the chocolate shop and bought one." "It's next to Shawn's picture," she said. "In August, the Rivas family didn't want to stay silent anymore," they said, and the social media campaign ignited. Signs with "At What Happened to Tosian" started appearing across town, and a Facebook page titled "What Happened to Shawn" formed. The family also started a petition on change.org called "What Happened to Shawn" in hopes of someone reopening Shawn's case. "We don't want this to be a fight with the York Pococin Sheriff." "All we're asking for is another option," Jared Rivas said. "I mean, you hear how we're describing him the night before he passed? We all just got back from a cruise and he got his passport done on Tuesday, April 12th, which he was thrilled about. He didn't know he was going to be alone until he got home from school. He couldn't have planned this." "Beyond the statement released on Facebook, no more details about the case will be released to the public," said Sheriff's Office spokeswoman Shelley Ward. "We just wanted to get out our information to put their minds at ease," Ward said. "There's not someone in our community that's out killing people, and we're not investigating it. We take all matters seriously." The medical examiner's office also made a statement, saying that in cases where a family disagrees with the cause of death, they are given an opportunity to present any new information. "In cases where the family suspects that someone killed their loved one, we ask families to contact the investigating law enforcement agency immediately to express their concerns," the statement continues. "We advise that law enforcement should be involved as they need to conduct the necessary follow-up on the new information. If law enforcement determines the information to be pertinent to our death investigation, then they will present it to our office and the medical examiner will evaluate this new information to determine if cause of death and/or manner of death needs to be amended." According to the Rivas's, there were many things out of place the day of Shawn's death. "All they want is for someone to give the case another look." "We're not investigators, we're just parents that lost an amazing kid," Jared Rivas said. "No matter what, no one can argue that he doesn't deserve a second shot." Abby Crank, abby.crank@virginiumedia.com. Copyright, copyright 2022 Daily Press. Copyright, copyright 2022 Daily Press.
Wow. So, this is, I mean, just a vibrant little boy. And, very, in my opinion, an exceptional kid, you know. I always think of some, someone like this, who dies young, who, you know, is extremely intelligent and loves to learn, you know. Could they be the person that could have cured cancer? Could they, you know, everyone makes a change in this life. All of us individually. We do it in some small or large way, but it all changes everything, you know. And, it just breaks my heart that this vibrant kid comes home from school and is, you know, an hour later is found hanging with his arms down beside him, like, I don't know if they were like tied or what, but I don't think they were tied, but in a usual manner to, where it would, you know, that he couldn't use his arms to hang himself. And, this article, it says there was very unusual things that happened that day. They don't really say, they don't really go too much in-depth about it, but they do say that the drawers and stuff was open in his home. To me, that makes it sound like it was staged, like maybe he was trying to go, you know, they was staging it to where maybe he was acting like he was trying to find something to hang himself. Sounds like the boy maybe walked in and witnessed to a two-year-old being abused and found groggy under one, it's very possible. Uh, rizzo. I don't know, I'll check though, honey. I got something, but I don't think it was from, I'll check, I haven't checked my mail. So I will check it though. Thank you, my love. Appreciate it. Did I hear wrong, or did it say his arms were at his sides and something about them being strapped? Yeah, that's, let's go back to that and see if I can find it. He, you know, wanted to become president when he grew up. Loved to read, loved his family, his sister. Okay, so it says, "While hanging, there was reportedly a nylon bag over his head and a belt strapped around his abdomen, pinning both of his arms to his side." Hell, oh my god. Seriously. And how, okay, I just want to know. How can they deem that? A- S-word. Okay. I'm gonna do a, we're gonna do a poll. Let's see here. Alright, I finally figured out how to do the polls. Alright, so please vote there. I'd like to, I'd like to see your thoughts on that. If this, you know, just by what we know right now in the first, you know, five minutes of our stream. You know, I just love to, to hear it. I mean, to me, that sounds very, uh, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like something that, you know, you would have, I mean, how do you have something over your head when you're hanging yourself? And then, how do you have a belt wrapped around the bottom of your arms? Don't get it. Don't get it. It's impossible, in my opinion. And, you know, his family, they seem like a really good family, you know? I mean, they, his mother was getting ready to work for the Pentagon. And, where's the poll? It should be above in your chat there. So, obviously, the mother has a good clearance as far as criminal history and anything related to that, right? Um, sounds too weird. The mother takes her mom to a, I think you mean doctor's appointment, and leaves the two-year-old home alone, and no one questions this. Um, I mean, that is strange. Before his death, Shawn was babysitting his two-year-old brother at the house while Ramona Rivas took her mother to a doctor's appointment. Shawn was excited to watch his little boy. Now, I agree. I think that's, I don't agree with them in that aspect, to be honest with you. I think 12 is a little too young to be watching a two-year-old. Um, but was there anyone else in the house? So this is near Williamsburg, Virginia, from what it seems. Um, is, if anyone knows about this case, do you know if the father is still involved? Like, does he still live in the home? Yeah, I agree, plead the fifth. One hell of a, I have a weird feeling about people mowing the house next door. There were workers outside in yard feet away. You would think that the mother, uh, going to work with the Pentagon, that the police would actually do a good job and take the family's concerns seriously. Yeah. Um, let's look at this poll. So, 3% says, um, they think that he, he did it to himself. 97% say no. So that's, um, definitely, um, overwhelming, you know? Alright. Well, I'm gonna do one more. Oh, here. 12-year-old, too young to watch two-year-old sister. Now, he did seem, from what I gather, a little bit more mature, maybe, than the average 12-year-old. Um, so I don't know if that, you know, means anything or not. Um, this happened, uh, April, this, this past April. Why would he put a bag over his head and how did he ta- Exactly. And, you know, another thing is, whenever someone, um, does something close to someone they, you know, that's very familiar to them, a lot of times, they will cover their head because it's too personal seeing their face. Um, and they will cover their head. It's, it's a very common thing that you see with particularly family members or, um, you know, any type of loved ones. This will, this can happen. Two-year-olds can choke, fall down, drunk, yeah. What's the age of babysitting for a few hours in a thing? I don't know, um, but to me, it's, it's not, you know, I mean, if, you know, to me, it's just like two-year-old, that's, that's really young. Um, I'm sorry, you're gonna hear vacuums and everything, guys, right now, I apologize. Um, you know, I would like to know the family's history and that's just very odd to me. Um, here's Shawn's obituary. And, Shawn Dottery, 12, passed away April 14th in Yorktown, Virginia. He was born on November 9th, 2009, to Ramona, uh, Rivas and Timothy Dottery. Shawn was a sweet, smart, loving boy with empathetic, and he shared his love of life with everyone around him. He had an excellent, he was an excellent student who loved Star Wars, video games, and Disney. Shawn was enamored by delight and enjoyment. He spread the, uh, he, he spread that vicariously to all in his vicinity that made the world a better place. "All those who knew Shawn were delighted by his amazing spirit and his loving kindness will stay with us forever." Shawn is survived by his loving parents, Jared and Ramona, uh, Rivas, and Timothy and Vivy Dottery, his sister. Uh, Maria and his brothers, Ethan and Hunter grandson, uh, Vijah. Uh, Gail Dottery and Sylvia Black, and his grandfathers, Ray, uh, Rivas and Alvin Shannon. Shawn was also loved and will be missed by his many aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends. And a celebration of life, okay. Very, very sad. Very sad. Um, here's a cute little video of him when he was a baby. Thank you, baby Buddha belly. He was sleepy there. Um, let's see what else we got here. Okay, now, we're going to search this in our study session. So there is a Facebook page called "What Happened to Shawn." And, you can also reach them to whathappenedtoShawn@gmail.com. Uh, there is a change, um, let's see where I'm at. Let's see where I'm at. All right. And the last post was, What Happened to Shawn on April fourteenth? Shawn Dottery passed away unexpectedly. Okay. He was a sixth grader at TAB Middle School and was only twelve years old. Never in our wildest dreams, specifically in 2022, did we think that an investigation could be so biased and assumption-based. We have been dismissed repeatedly. They will tell you, we are crazy, unable to let go. They will tell you it was S, and it's a cut and dry case. They will say, S never makes sense. All we ask is that you pull up a chair, hear us out, and come to your own conclusions. If you have any information, or, hold on, come to your own conclusions. Think you'll agree that there are way too many things that don't add up. Help us find out what really happened to Shawn. If you have any information in the investigation, please email whathappenedtoShawn@gmail.com or call eight oh four nine oh five eight six one three. Post eleven, Smoke. On Friday, April fifteenth, the day after Shawn's death, rumors were flying. Neighbors had witnessed the chaos on Sandalwood, and the community was craving information. Some teachers at the high school had caught wind of what happened, and the school notified the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office sent a representative to high school to assure the teachers and staff there was no threat to the community. Damage control was in full effect less than twenty-four hours after Shawn's death. Over the course of the weekend, things continued to get more and more strange for the family. Meals and flowers are close neighbors were delivered, but the school hadn't notified the classmates. Where was that? But the school hadn't notified the classmates of what had transpired. The family received inquiries, phone calls, and messages of social media from people who had heard something had happened but didn't know what. Community members who called the sheriff's office were again told there was nothing to be concerned of. Ramona, which is Shawn's mom, framed her favorite picture of Shawn and stood in at the base of the tree in front of the house with a candle. Neighbors began leaving flowers, trinkets, and messages, messages. Message, is that right? Okay. Messages, messages, sorry. For Shawn. It was Easter weekend. Local churches and S grief groups reached out to offer condolences and support. Even though Ramona and Jared stated that they didn't believe that this was an S, they were consistently met with resistance. They were told that it was a typical, it was typical for a family to be in denial after losing a loved one to suicide. Oh crap, I just said it. And it might be years to make peace with it. No one is, no one was listening every day, or sorry, everyone seemed to know better than them, and no one was taking the time to actually listen to what the family was saying. It was maddening. An investigator hand-delivered Shawn's glasses on Monday and gave them to the family. They were broken, a missing lens. It was a well-intentioned gesture as they thought, as they thought they would want to bury them with Shawn. However, the family could not understand why the glasses weren't being treated as evidence. The investigator did not know where the lens was. They weren't in a bag, they weren't tagged. Later, later, the parents asked if they had been tested, and they were told, of course they were. On Monday, April eighteenth, a representative from the sheriff's office visited Shawn's class and spoke to his classmates about the S and informed them of Shawn's passing. On April nineteenth, after Shawn's class had been addressed, had been addressed, the school sent an automated voice message from the principal out to each family, explaining that Shawn has passed away and that the grief counseling was available for all students. They also sent an email that echoed the message in the voicemail. After this went out, Ramona received a single phone call that had all of Shawn's core sixth graders, sixth grade teachers on the line at the same time. They could not believe that Shawn would K himself and expressed their doubt. They stated that Shawn had submitted his homework that afternoon. He walked with them to the class and was in a great mood that day. They were in shock. Some of Shawn's peers were interviewed, and Ramona and Jared requested they talk to his best friend. Parents would later recall Ramona and tell her that the line of questioning made them uncomfortable, and it made them feel like they were only looking at S as a manner of death. This was not the Shawn that they knew and the kids knew. Nothing made sense. Over the weekend, Ramona and Jared visited neighbors and asked if they had seen anything on the security cameras. They asked, the investigators had requested any footage, and they said they hadn't. They asked them to please watch the recordings from Thursday and let them know if they had saw anything out of the norm in the area. It was odd that there were, there were ones canvassing the neighborhoods. It was odd that there was, were the ones canvassing the neighborhoods, and they didn't understand why the investigation had not spoken to the neighbors yet. A few minutes, a few neighbors posted in the HOA social media group asking for video, and if someone had noticed anything, the page received a still screenshot from a house on Sandalwood with a landscaper truck in front of Shawn's house, timestamped at four thirty-six PM Eastern Time on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This was thirteen minutes before Maria got home. It was a still shot from a video, as you could see the recording minutes at the bottom of the picture. They asked the neighbor for a full video several times, but they were, but were never given the footage. Ramona and Jared had several calls with the medical examiner regarding the findings. When a forensic pathologist is assigned to the case, she utilized, she utilizes the body, any evidence she has presented with the investigator in theories, how a decedent passed based on a combination of fact and opinion. In fact, the lead investigator was listed on the autopsy as present during the exam, as well as the person who brought evidence to the ME for Measurements, ETC. The ME was given, the medical examiner was given the string and had been found on Shawn's neck, the article of clothing on the body and the belt that had his arms tied down. She sent off several samples of testing and also completed a PERC test. Once the medical examiner had done with the body, it was released and was driven down to Southern Pines, North Carolina for the funeral. The family packed up the SUV and drove down to North Carolina, unable to divert their eyes from one empty seat in the back, Shawn's. So this is as big as it's. So if, I don't know, can you guys see that? I'm going to show you this. Right here is a landscaping truck. It looks like, looks like a black truck, and it looks like, like one of the windows may be broken out, or it's a different color, like they've, hold on. And there's a trailer. This was twelve minutes before. Yes, I can check, wait a minute. This was twelve minutes before. He, before the mother got home. I just don't see, yes. I mean, somebody would have to know who this landscaping truck would be, wouldn't you I mean, I would think they would have to know. I mean, some, have they, yeah, it's like a landscaping, you know, or, you know, where they mow the grass and all that. That's crazy. Very sad. And it, you know, according to the parents, it doesn't seem like, you know, anybody's taking this as serious as what they would ask them to. So apparently, they have these hanging out in the yards at What Happened to Shawn. So you can tag something. And this was posted September ninth at eleven oh three PM. Post ten, silenced. It was the afternoon on the day after Shawn had died. Nothing seemed to have made sense, and they couldn't figure out any of, if any of this was real. Before the investigation had left, the day they had advised Ramona and Jared against disclosing details of the incident to anyone, rumors were flying as the neighbors whispered about what happened on Sandalwood Lane. Why wasn't this on the news? Concerned community members called the sheriff's office and was told that there was nothing to be afraid of. The sheriff's office sent investigators to the high school to assure that, to assure the staff that there was no threat of the community. An enormous amount of time and energy was directed toward controlling the narrative the day after the death, rather than toward the investigation. The investigators had called Jared a few times that day to talk about the items that Shawn was dressed in, and also about the bag that was found on his head. We gotta remember that, there was a bag found on his head and a belt around his arms. They explained that this was a silver gray bag with black shoe on it. Immediately, Jared thought of the old motorcycle helmet bags he had in the garage in a pile for Goodwill, and he and Ramona went out into the garage to see if they, if they were missing. There was one missing and one still there, but missing, but one missing a string. Someone had taken the string out of the two bags to suspend Shawn, but left the second bag in the garage. This made them really uneasy. Jared and Ramona are both in the military, and every military family knows how much equipment each member acquires over the years. Shawn knew there were boxes of duffels and robe, rope cords and military-grade five-five-oh paracord, all in, all in the garage. If he needed an actual rope, he would, he knew where to find the one as the family used, I can't hardly see, the family used them often for various projects. It seemed like someone literally opened the door to the garage in a rush and grabbed the first thing they could find. They also noticed that a bunch, that a bunch of their boots in the garage had been partially unlaced. Had someone tried to take out the laces and realized they wouldn't work? Did they try to put the boots on him? Shawn also had his own drawstring bags, gym bags, in his room. Why would he not use one of those? He would, why would he not grab a necktie while allegedly dressing himself in his stepfather's clothes? That is another thing, guys. He was allegedly dressed in his stepfather's clothes, adult clothes. The choice for materials baffled them. The investigators asked Jared about the clothes found on Shawn. Ramona had taken pictures of Shawn that night in the hospital, but only of the dress shirt he was wearing. They didn't have any pictures of the denim pants, as they were not on his body when he was brought into the ER. The investigators described the pants to the family, and they sounded like a pair of Jared's jeans, but they were never shown a picture of either the pants or the belt. They have never identified them and still not been given access to the discovery. Why weren't the investigators canvassing the neighborhood? Why were people being asked for their security footage? Why, why weren't people asked for their security footage? Shouldn't we be pulling every camera on the lane to see if there were cars or walkers in the area at the time? Why weren't anyone doing anything? Why weren't the investiga, okay, after, sorry. As the afternoon rolled by, Jamie left to go gather her own children in school. As she stepped outside to leave, she received a call on her cell from an investigator who had questioned Maria the night before. He asked her if she had remembered him, and she said, yes. He told her that this was an open investigation and that she was not to speak to anyone about the case. He, he told her that meant no calls, no gossip, no social media. She started to feel sick. He, he told her that he had been flooded with phone calls, that this was impeding his ability to do his job. She hadn't spoken to anyone other than the school. She hadn't spoken to anyone other than the school guidance counselor that morning. She had spent the night that Sean died laying awake in bed, wondering how she would. How she would let her kids walk or ride in the neighborhood again. Praying that the security systems covered every inch of the house where they really. Were they really not going? To tell the neighbors what happened? Why did all? Why was all of this a secret? Wow. Hey Karen, come here. I'll give you a link. Let you not be so boring. Come here, honey. Let me show you how to laven it up. Listen. I don't find joy out of this. Sorry. Don't find joy out of it. No, 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 Karen, Karen, Karen can type in the chat. She can come up here. Come on, Karen. Don't be a Karen. Don't be a Karen, Karen. Karen, listen, I don't find joy out of this. I don't find joy out of it. It's heartbreaking. Oh, she can still click the link, though. Even if you're timed out, you can still click a stream yard link. A child is dead and Karen is bored. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. All I sent you in the article is the choking game. Do you think that's a possibility? I don't think so personally, Heather. I think because of. You know, with the way his arms was, the what he was dressed in. I don't think that this would be one of those. Instances. You know, just my opinion, though, personally, you know, I just don't think so. Guys, I need to go tinkle really quickly. And. We're gonna be on uh Karen watch for a few moments, if you don't mind. Um. Let me know if you can hear. This music. Thank you for holding for me. I appreciate it. Alright, yeah, if you guys don't mind hitting the thumbs up, I would greatly appreciate it. Just in case she wants to sign and you can't find the link, please, please. So um. I'm going to drop the petition. For Sean. In the chat. Yeah, I can take calls. Of course, let me uh. Yep, you can call N three zero seven two two eight four nine zero six. It's scrolling at the bottom of the screen. Did I drop that yet? That is the link mods. Yeah, it seems. Thank you, tin foil chips. Appreciate you, honey. Um. Thank you so much, my love. Thanks for your loving dead heart. The world is dying for loving. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So the petition. Show it to you. Change dot org. Nine seven three.
Hi, Dr. Amy again. How you doing?
Hey, Amy. Good. How are you?
Good, thanks. I saw this. There was another person that um covered this case. You know what I did after I watched the video? I went and I tweeted up the sheriff's office. They do have a Twitter and you could put some pressure on them that way um to get them to open up the case up and do their job and just not be lazy, in my opinion. That's what I believe that they're doing. Because what I put in my tweets was that um. And don't don't be like them. This is I'm like a rabble rouser. Don't don't be like the Milwaukee sheriff. Um this Milwaukee police that like Jeffrey Dahmer, as we watched the um the series, I said. Uh because you don't know if you're if you're not doing, if you're not gonna investigate, you may be um causing other potential victims.
Right.
Uh because they they gotta stop dropping the ball on these cases and stopping lazy. And they and they do have a Facebook page that just share Mr. York, Quonson, or something like that. I can look it up. It's like it's on Facebook. You can look it up. And they did a um a press conference on this case. I don't know if you're aware. York, Y O R K. Dash P O Q. U O S O N space sheriff space office on Facebook.
Uh huh.
Seven five seven eight nine zero three six three zero is their phone number. But I believe that in August, they did a press conference. Yeah, I think I think they they did update. And I think you gotta just scroll down because I put comments. You should also be pushing, putting comments in there on Facebook. There's also a record. Do you recommend the sheriff's office? And I wrote, I I think I wrote no. I did. I did say no, or I did recommend it, but then I stated that they're hurting. There's this case, that other case, this case needs to be investigated. There's potential for other children getting hurt if this is something that was not the um the not an unaliving event, if you know what I mean.
Yes.
Everybody should go to the if they don't have Twitter, um you could do a pressure campaign by put by um blanketing their on Facebook page with saying that they do not recommend this sheriff's office. Um you know, like we do reviews on on hotels, restaurants, products, and on Amazon, etc.
These sheriffs get voted in and they can also get voted out, right?
Exactly. The office stuff, it's the biggest debate that they did. There was another stream that played their um report, you know, that their their conclusion that this was fully investigated. And it was, they just were so snarky and cocky about it. And and just like we are, it's all knowing that we.
Really?
It just it had a tone to to that. It was very insensitive. It was just, I don't know, it was just very upsetting to do this to people. And um all they're doing is, you know, you have to really scroll down. I think it's in August eighty six. It's like a you just have to scroll their Facebook and find their update on this case because they do have a Facebook page. And I think everybody, if they don't have um the caption and um the, you know, the the drive to get this um child justice and get the case properly investigated, I think that is people going on their their Facebook page and our Twitter, it should do that and stay the pace with their big score. It should be reopened, so.
Mm hmm.
Just an example. And I don't think he did that to himself. And I do think that it's too young for him to to watch a two year old. Like it depends on the child because when I was thirteen, I was hard to watch anything. People like I just depends on the kid like.
Yeah. Right.
And I did a very good job, you know, but that's just me. And I don't know if it's because he's sexist and I think because they're all, I feel more comfortable for a female.
Sure.
More motherly, you know.
Right, sure.
Sure, kind of boy, you know, to do that, you know. So that's just, this is my opinion.
Sure.
Um but but this was covered, but it's good that. Thank you for doing this because not enough people are doing this.
Yeah.
I don't see anybody else covering this case for this child.
You don't see a lot going out about this this boy. I mean, it's hard to find um. Any information, really.
Do you want me to say? Did you want me to say who covered the case or you could?
Sure, sure.
It was Grizzly, Grizzly True Crime.
Okay, Grizzly did. Okay, I love her.
She did it. And also um the Pascal show, he did a little, he did something on it. And you're the third I've said I know of. I don't know if anybody else. I don't follow all. I can't keep up with every prime channel, you know. I have my favorite few, you know, so um. I'm just saying that you're the third, but that's good because it's, you know, the more it's put out, the more people will be interested in. It's just terrible because they could, there could be somebody else there doing this to other children. And um it could be danger for other kids and for them to not um do the proper thing. It's very unfair to other parents. You know, think, you know what I mean? It's just unbelievable, you know? It's just crazy, in my opinion. So that's all, alright?
I agree. I agree. It's. Thank you. Thank you, my dear. Bye bye. Yeah, I need to go watch uh. I may email her about. This case. It's just terrible. Like uh. You know, I C U and I, we were looking up stuff and. There wasn't really a whole lot on her. So here is a video of Sean's mom. I think it's a video of Sean's mom.
They have told me a few times that they really don't know how to investigate this kind of murder case because it's really complicated. They don't have the experience. They have never seen something like this before. Then please do me the favor and turn it over to the state police or F B I who do it all the time. We just had amazing vacation. He just got back on the Sunday. It was the reward. We just had amazing vacation. He just got back on.
I mean, they look like a, you know, a beautiful family, right? I plead the fifth prayers for your. Grandfather.
On the Sunday. It was the reward for the kids. He had got all A's. He was in a very good spirit. It was like a regular day. And my mom um comes out. She's like in a hurry. Um the doctor's office called and said, hey, uh she needs an E K G. But the appointment is only twenty five minutes. It's a safe neighborhood. And he said, Mom, don't.
So an E K G, it's. Like, yeah, I mean, twenty five minutes is. If it she lives close by, I mean, that would be. More than enough time.
Don't worry. I got it. You know, I I love babysitting. He was reading his book later. I could see he had pulled it out. Boom, Sean is not answering the door. Police and ambulance just went behind fire trucks. And I was like, my stomach dropped. The chair wasn't exactly next to him. Please don't ask many questions. I told them. I told them Sean didn't do it. He was killed that first night. I said, I told them all. I need to see where's my youngest one. He was like an exhausted doll. He opened his eyes. He was all sweaty. It looked like he had been crying. Personally, I think that he woke up from the hassle and bustle what was happening. I saw all kinds of stuff in the house that was out of place. I froze because I was like, that's a huge hand print.
So a question. Did? Did someone know? That she was going to the doctor? Because twenty five minutes is not very long. It's not very long at all. So pretty much the moment she left, something had to take place. Minutes after that. Yeah, yeah. And it takes longer to hook up the E K G than it does to do the E K G. You know? This is weird.
On the door. That's not Sean's. Hand was not from the outside, but from the inside. And. It was the left hand. I saw some splatters that seemed like small blood things. I need to see where's wasn't exactly next. The chair wasn't exactly next to him. Please don't ask many questions. I told them. I told them Sean didn't do it. He was killed that first night. I said, I told them all. I need to see where's my youngest one. He was like an exhausted doll. He opened his eyes. He was all sweaty. It looked like he had been crying. Personally, I think that he woke up from the hassle and bustle what was happening. I saw all kinds of stuff in the. I saw all kinds of stuff in the house that was out of place. I froze because I was like, that's a huge handprint. On the door. That's not Sean's. Hand was not from the outside, but from the inside. And it was the left hand. I saw some splatters that seemed like small blood things that I asked them to collect. Sean definitely had blood on, when I did the picture on his hand, but the call, uh, officer, she washed it off. The belt was tied around my son. Oh, they said, oh, he probably tied it himself and all that. So why there was no DNA on the belt? Four weeks later, taking fingerprints, four weeks later, after we raised hell? Four weeks later, going around the neighbors, asking if they saw anything? I screamed in a hospital saying, my son was murdered. Cause there's something really wrong. When I walked into our bedroom, I literally almost walked onto Sean's underwear. Never there. Sean never ever in his life has taken his underwear off in my bedroom. There's no reason for it. And it was across from my husband's clothes. And my husband's drawers were opened up because Sean was dressed in my husband's clothes. So was the ambush in his room then, you know? And then he dragged him or they fought all the way to our bedroom. So he was interrupted. Did they wrestle to get up the stairs? Did they fight their way up? You know, I don't know. Um. I think that someone saw something, and I think not just one. I think a couple of people saw something. But I know there was no real investigation. If you ask the parents to find the person who did it, and we are not investigators, there is a problem. They're asking me to find the person. We don't want to investigate, just say it. I have a text where it says, you know, it's time to move on and live my life. I know we have really good neighborhood and I know people wanna help. They just don't know that we are asking for help.
That's crazy. I feel like someone had to know that they were leaving or was watching the house. I don't know, but you know, I mean, wearing his stepdad's clothes and the law enforcement are not helping him like whatsoever. Hold on, I wanna. Oh, wrong one. Alright, so here is Timothy, the dad. Timothy Daughtry. And you know, I feel like you know, these parents need answers. Um. Which this doesn't look like it's been. I mean, it still may be. Huh. Interesting. Let's see what else we got. Was there anybody, um? Oh, that's very interesting. Look at this. Someone tagged me a week ago about this case. That's very interesting. Thank you. What happened to Sean? So we'll, we'll go over more of this later, cause there's many more, um, parts to this. And just crazy. My cousin, okay, um. Okay, um, alright, now we're gonna move on to another strange, uh, yeah. Karen, uh, is a Karen for a reason. Not to be, um, confused with the good Karens. You know, if you don't have, I don't go in anybody's room and just say really horrible things to people. I don't, I, if I, if I don't like the person, um, I just don't go into the room. That's it. Especially when you're trying to talk about a dead twelve year old. Bothered me so much, I wrote about it. Sure, sure, Gina, that would be great. The army has a regulation that you must be ten years old to stay by yourself. Once you're twelve, you may stay with a sibling for a few hours during the day. Thank you, Army wife, for that. Okay. So guys, get this. Crazy. Crazy, crazy. Look at this dude. What is with the serial killers in like Seattle and Portland area? It's like they're always, there's so many are there. It's crazy, isn't it? So. Seattle man convicted after twenty-four body parts, including five human heads found scattered in Arizona. A sixty-one year old man was convicted of several charges relating to abandoning a corpse after two years after body parts were found scattered in a remote area. Uh, a jury found Walter Harold Mitchell guilty of twenty-nine counts of abandonment or concealment of a dead body. On January, or sorry, on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, deputies were notified about the discovery of human remains near Prescott, which is in Arizona, and searched the area for additional body parts. The how do you pronounce that? Let's see. The Yavapie, I don't know, pie, uh, county, uh, medical examiner who was on the scene said the evidence tends to show um, the remains are from a, from a medical institution intended for use with educational and research field. They discovered limbs. Sorry, my computer's acting up. They discovered limbs including detached arms and legs, as well as five severed heads. The attorney office said twenty-four body parts were found in total. As the investigation continued, uh, the sheriff's department remains were connected to a former Seattle-based business called Future Gen X. Which Mitchell owned and operated. His company reportedly, quote, involved the, the management of cadavers for research, end quote. The business closed down in twenty twenty and Mitchell reportedly left Seattle with the remains of five individuals. According to the county attorney's office, the body parts were marked with silver tags and had serial numbers on them which are reportedly used for donor purposes. Mitchell reportedly used rented freezer space to store the body parts from, quote, "not less than nine donors," end quote. And when he left Washington, he transported the bodies in a U-Haul with dry ice. The statement says Mitchell lived in, uh, is it Chinko Valley? And had a shed with a chest freezer inside where he kept the body parts. He reportedly admitted to dumping the remains in November twenty twenty. He then, uh, reportedly sold the chest freezer and moved to Scottsdale. So somebody is keeping their, uh, freezer. The food in a freezer where dead bodies were perfect. The deputy, um, the, uh, attorney thanked the, the jury for sitting through such a horrific case and hopes this verdict will bring some justice and closure to those families who loved ones were donated for medical research and treated so disrespectfully. That is crazy. Hold on, so I can fix my computer. Um. So apparently, these were for, um, you know, donated bodies, donated remains that sorry, my computer's freezing up. These were donated remains and I guess he just dumps them out somewhere that he didn't think they were going to be found. I mean, I don't understand why the man who yuck they bought a freezer of Craigslist now it is used for food gag. That's what I'm saying. Yes. And you know, that's what I was, you know, Marissa and I, we, and LB, we were talking about, uh, a week or so ago, a little boy who we couldn't find, you know, they couldn't find his body. They said he was buried there. They were doing a body ex, you know, they were going to exhume him to move. This was a child that died at birth. Still bir, stillborn and where the hell, what happened? And they can't find his body. And I'm like, you know, they didn't see him actually be buried. They said they, the funeral director closed the cask or the, they closed the little casket thingy that they, the hospital gave them and they said it couldn't be reopened. And I'm like, is this something where, you know, they could have donated the baby? You just don't know anymore. You know, you, it could be in a a university for research. Who knows, right? Thank you, Mama the Boss, for finding the iPhone link. I appreciate that. Um. It's, it's just insanity. I'm gonna try to fix this. Give me a second, um. I mean, there is just so much craziness going on in the world right now. It's pathetic. Let me see if I can find it. Yep, just body parts, uh, going everywhere. Um. You know, I mean, these, these generous people give their, their body to science in hopes that they can you know, be something of the greater good of, you know, changing you know, changing things through science and, uh, learning. And they were thrown over like yesterday's garbage. That is exactly right, Gina. I could literally be on twenty-four seven and just the amount of things that I get every single day. It's crazy. It's so crazy. So, um, Justin, I have. Well, thank you so much. Um. It's sad, the world we live in these days especially, yeah. Um. You know, the, the ones that really bother me is the ones with just children. Children really bother me. Um. It's craziness. Trash and is so sick. You're right, Camille. Yeah, I don't know. You know, there's a lot of the funeral homes sadly will they've been, there has been funeral homes that have, they've been caught selling body parts. I'm like, God, people. Yes. October thirty-first, he will be sentenced. Oh dear goodness. Alright guys, I've been on here an hour and a half. I'll be, I'll be live later on my fun channel where we will not be as boring, hopefully. I appreciate every one of you. Um, Justin, it's mind blowing, isn't it? Wonderful what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you, Two Skull. I appreciate it. Um, God bless each and every one of you. I appreciate you tremendously. Please hit the thumbs up button. I would greatly, greatly appreciate it. I love each and every one of you and um, get a little rest if you stayed up all night like I did. So yes. Alright guys, love you. Thank you so much. Um. I appreciate it and I will see you guys a little bit later. Bye bye. Yes, please trend Sean's story. Share this out if you don't mind. Um. Share this out. I would appreciate it. That way we can hopefully get more creators doing this. I appreciate it. Love you. Bye bye.